Well, good afternoon. This is Rod Haggas Parkland County Mayor. I'll call the meeting to order at 1:30 PM for July 6th, 2021, and the meeting is in session. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, we will be conducting this meeting virtually through electronic communication under Parkland County's Meeting Procedure Bylaw 2015-06 and Section 199 of the Municipal Government Acts. So let's start with today's road call. And I, we do have two members of council that I believe are not present, but I will call upon all members of council, starting with Division One Councillor, Councillor Jensen. Councillor Jensen didn't, did inform us that she would not be present for this meeting. Division Three Councillor Kabasiak.
Present.
Division Four Councillor Hollands. And Councillor Hollands also advised he was unable to be available this afternoon. Division Five Councillor McNab.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, present.
And Division Six Councillor Melnick.
Present.
So the records will reflect that there's four members of council present. I'll just go through the procedures for today's meeting. So I will call out our agenda item and ask the Chief Administrative Officer to introduce the matter. Then I'll get a member of council to put forward the motion. Each member of council will have an opportunity to speak to the agenda item and upon conclusion of all the comments and questions from members of council, I will then ask councils, members if they're in favor or against the proposed motion. Once that vote is cast, then I will declare the motion either carried or failed. Today I'd like to start with celebrating success and I will turn that over to Ms. Swain, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I believe we have Ms. Sarah Me on the line to present our celebrating success. We'll pass it over to Ms. Me.
Thank you very much, Ms. Swain. Mr. Mayor and members of council, I am very excited to come before you today to celebrate the opening of the brand-new Entwhistle outdoor pool. On June 29th, we held a soft opening by inviting the children of Entwhistle School to come swimming on their last day of school as our first swimmers. On July 1st, we opened to the public and welcomed over 400 swimmers on July 1st and 2nd alone. Unfortunately, the mechanical system was impacted by the very heavy thunderstorm that happened in the area on July 3rd. While we had over 400 people booked to swim the following two days as well, we were able to contact them directly and let them know about the issue and also cancel their bookings. We're working hard at reopening and hope to be able to take bookings for this coming weekend. I would like to extend heartfelt thanks to Ms. Suzanne Merrills for her work in turning what was once a vision into a reality. I would also like to thank our facility attendant, Ms. Teresa Machuck, for her dedication both to the facility and in serving our residents and visitors. I, I went out to the facility a couple of Fridays ago prior to opening and was greeted by Teresa's big happy smile and it's really evident how excited she is to be there and how important the facility is to her. So that was really nice to see. That concludes my update. Be happy to answer any questions council may have.
Thank you, Ms. Mate. I will just make one comment. I was out at Entwhistle on July 1st for Canada Day and the pool was well-used. There are some other residents of Entwhistle who came into the facility at the same time and they were marveling at the facility and very appreciative of the investment that Parkland County made into the Hamlet event whistle. Ms. Swain will turn it over to you for comment.
I, I think Councillor Melnick had her hand up first and then I can comment.
Councillor Melnick.
Thank you, Ms. Swain. Yeah, I had sent a message when the staff Suzanne and the staff were able to kind of just push things a little bit outside of the envelope that they needed to in order to ensure that the the school-aged children got that first opportunity to jump in the pool prior to the soft opening. It absolutely warmed my heart and I so thank everybody, the council that supported this and and it is an investment in our community. It's an investment in Parkland County. I'm sure that it was very evident with the amount of bookings that took place over, over this soft opening, that it's not just the residents of the, of the direct area that are utilizing the pool. And I, and I believe that that's not, that is also what we're not going to see throughout the years to come. Thanks.
Ms. Swain.
Thank you. And I also had the pleasure of heading out to the new facility last week on probably the hottest day of the year and it was so great to see all the kids playing in the pool. And I also had the pleasure of talking to Teresa at the front desk and she was just so pleasant to talk to and it's great that we have someone like her who is greeting residents as they come into the pool and she had just such wonderful things to say about Suzanne and Sarah. So just thank you all so much for your work on this. And also the library is beautiful. I was really just impressed with how nice the library came together and they have a great display out in front of the library right now with Indigenous books. And so it's celebrating Indigenous contributions to Canadian literature. And it's just a wonderful space. So thank you.
Thank you. With that, I will look to Councillor Melnick for this afternoon's inspirational reflection, please.
Thank you. I'm just going to start off with a quote that I came across. Excellence is never an accident. It is a result of high intention, sincere effort, intelligent direction, skilled execution, and the vision to see obstacles as opportunities. So may council and administration keep this in mind as we continue to serve the residents of Parkland County in each and every one of our roles. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Melnick. So on today's agenda, we have the following items. Item 4.1, which is the adoption of the June 22nd, 2021 Council Meeting Minutes. Item 5.1, which is at 1:45, which is Public Input. Item E1, which is the Wobman Restricted Surplus Transfer and Project Funding Matter. Item G1 is the West Interlake District or Wild Regional Water Commission Phase 3 Entwhistle Extension. Item G2 is the Capital Region Parkland Water Services Commission Funding Request. Item G3 is the Walker Lake Water Loop Additional Funding Request. We do have a closed session under 9.1 and that is a matter dealing with the Wild or West Interlake District Phase 3. Then we'll revert back into open session. We also have under 8.1 Rural Municipalities of Alberta Contact Newsletter. Under item 8.2, we have the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Update. Item 8.3 is Committee Reports. I'll ask members of council if there's any additions or deletions and I'll start with Division Three Councillor Kabasiak.
Mr. Chair, you, your, your words are broken up. I don't have any Councillor Kabasiak, Division Three. I have no additions or deletions.
Thank you, Councillor Kabasiak. Councillor McNab, any additions or deletions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No additions or deletions for me.
Thank you, and Councillor Melnick.
No additions or deletions for myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get a member of council put forward the motion before us?
Sure. Tracy Melnick, Councillor for Division, put forward the motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
My apologies. Before I take that motion, I need to look to Ms. Swain if there's any additions or deletions from administration.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No additions or deletions from administration today.
Thank you. So we do have the motion from Councillor Melnick. I'll just ask members of council to please raise your hand if you're in favor of that motion. And that is carried unanimously. Thank you. And on today's consent agenda, we have item 4.1, which is the adoption of the June 22nd, 2021 Council Meeting Minutes. Item 8.1, the Federal Municipalities of Alberta Contact Newsletter. Item 8.2, which is the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Update. Are there any additions or deletions to the consent agenda for members of council? Councillor Melnick.
Mr. Mayor, if I may put forward in addition, 8.3 Committee Reports, being that we do not have all members of committee.
Thank you very much. So with that, can I get a mover for the motion to adopt, adopt the consent agenda as amended, please?
Mr. Mayor, Councillor John McNabb, Division Five, bring forward the motion to adopt the consent agenda as amended.
Thank you very much. Once again, I'll ask members of council to please raise your hand if you're in favor of that motion. Thank you. So that is carried. We did have one registered speaker for Public Input, which is scheduled at 1:45 and that's Mr. Adam Doherty. I see Mr. Doherty has joined us already. So we'll move to Public Input at this time. And Mr. Doherty, if you can unmute your mic, the floor is yours.
About three weeks ago, I received a proposal from ExploreNet in my mail in regards to a 5G tower that they would like to build based on the house. And the only reason I received notification is that I own a business on the adjacent property that falls within the district and the distance from the tower that needs to be notified. And I am, obviously I've done a lot of digging into this. I have since contacted the landowner that is leasing the location to the ExploreNet and asked them to move the tower. So I'm proceeding through the legislation as I guess I need to. My point of joining today's meeting is to just strongly encourage the council that they develop their own policy in regards to these towers, being left to basically fight on my own for this is how I feel. And yeah, I would just really like to see the council at least take this into consideration. I don't know if it's been brought to the council's attention before, but sounds like they're going to be expanding their coverage substantially in our county and the area and they are, they're an eyesore. So that's just, that's, that was, that was my reason for joining.
Thank you, Mr. Doherty, for bringing forth your, your comments this morning or this afternoon. My apologies. And we have had other residents bring forward issues regarding the sighting of, of towers, whether they're 5G or, or 4G towers. And you know, people, obviously, as you commented, they say there's, they're an eyesore. Often many people also are asking for better internet coverage, which means they have to be in close proximity. Your, your video was breaking up and audio a little bit. So obviously your connection, I believe it's your connection, isn't that great? But point taken. You may be aware that it is the federal government through industry and science that makes the decisions on the approvals of of internet towers. Councillor Melnick.
Mr. Doherty, can you just advise us whereabouts that tower is located? I'm not sure myself, being that I'm representing in the West End. Thanks.
I actually don't have the proposal with me. That's the one thing I unfortunately didn't write. I live about two and a half kilometers south off of 627 on Range Road 275. And the tower would be north of where we built our house five years ago, basically our dream home out in the country because we wanted to get away from the, the city and everything that that entails. Um, and yeah, it would be a 147, 146-foot tower in, in the main purview out of the front of the house. So and, and then as far as the previous comments in regards to the policy, my understanding is that the council chooses not to develop their own policy and default to Industry Canada's policy, which I understand as well within the rights of the council. However, I don't feel like that is truly representing its citizens or its general population in a, in a fair and just way.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Doherty, for your comments and we'll have that opportunity. I, I noticed Ms. Swain did take the general area, the notes from the general area. And there is a referral from the federal government to municipalities when applications are put forward by any service provider or telecom company. So thank you for your presence and your comments to council this afternoon.
Thank you, council. I appreciate it.
With that, Ms. Swain, we'll move to item E1 under Chief Financial Officer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So on December 9th, 2020, as you know, the province of Alberta approved Order in Council 386 2020, which finalized the dissolution of the village of Wobman into Parkland County effective January 1st, 2021. We as Parkland County continue to harmonize historical processes from the village, the former village of Wobman within county operations. So a key element of this is a review of historically restricted funds to ensure that they align with county policy and are allocated in a manner that best serves residents. In order to accomplish this, administration is recommending removing the previously established restrictions with the former village of Wobman. Administration proposes that these funds be reallocated to the Hamlet Sustainability Restricted Surplus so that they can be utilized within Wobman and other county hamlets as directed by council. Administration feels there is a strong alignment between the funds raised in the community and utilizing them back within the community and, and like communities across the county. Administration has identified a number of priority projects to undertake within the hamlet and would like to utilize a portion of these funds to complete the work. So these projects include canal parking lot improvements and clearing. There would actually be no additional funds required for this project. The next one would be waterfront park shelter and parking lot repairs, which would be $32,000. And lastly, there would be Coal Diamond Sports Park repairs and upgrade, which would be a couple of different projects and that would be $102,000. And so that would be a total of $134,000 funded by the Hamlet Restricted Surplus. So there's a few motions before you. The first one is that council approve the dissolution of historical restricted surplus accounts held by the former village of Wobman. The second one is that council approve the transfer of $750,000 of the now unrestricted funds to the Hamlet Sustainability Restricted Surplus. And the third is that council approve funding from the Hamlet Sustainability Restricted Surplus in the amount of $134,000 for projects identified to support the community of the newly formed Hamlet of Wobman. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Swain. Can I get a mover for the first motion, please?
Mr. Mayor, Councillor Kabasiak, Division Three, I move that council approve the dissolution of historical plus accounts held by the village of Wobman.
Thank you. And I'll open it up for comments or questions. Councillor Melnick.
Thank you. So this is a complete amount of money that's being transferred over? Is that? Yeah, thank you.
Yes.
Any other comments or questions? Not seen any. Please raise your hand if you're in support of that motion. That is carried unanimously. Can I get a mover for the second motion, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's Councillor John McNabb, Division Five, that council approved the transfer of 750,000 of the now unrestricted funds to the Hamlet Sustainability Restricted Surplus.
Questions or comments on this motion? Not seen any. Please raise your hand if you're in favor. That is carried unanimously. And could I get a mover for the third and final item on this agenda matter?
Mr. Mayor, Councillor Tracy Melnick, Division Six, I'll put forward the motion that council approve funding from the Hamlet Sustainability Restricted Surplus in the amount of $134,000 for the projects identified to support the community of the newly formed Hamlet of Wobman. And if I may make a comment, I think that, you know, it's great that we're able to take some of the funds that actually came from the Wobman when it was a, a village and invest it right back in. Just hope though that there's also not an expectation that all funds that came out will always have to go back into Wobman. It, it sometimes is a perception from individuals to think, well, that was our money. Whereas we all understand as council, we work as one and also too that there'll be many, many projects down the road from the general taxpaying dollars. Thanks.
Any further comments or questions on this motion? Councillor McNab.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My, my comment would be to kind of on a similar lines to Ms. Laura Swain in regards to moving forward with any other type of projects, just so the residents of Wobman understand there would be a matrix of some type of a model coming forward to whatever projects may be identified on, on where, where they, where they fit within the priority of council of Parkland County.
Councillor Kabasiak, any comments or questions?
Yeah, I do have one. Thank you. Ms. Mate earlier, actually, in the committee, in the whole meeting, was talking about a Wobman patients beginning noting. I suspected this would be part of that information package. Ms. Swain, if you just wanted to comment on that?
Uh, yes, absolutely. Residents will be made aware that these improvements are coming. So that is something that I believe will be communicated relatively soon to these residents. We just wanted to ensure there was council approval prior to that.
One question for administration. So I'm just wondering about the timing of these projects and certainly appreciate that there'll be communication, but some of these are going to, I guess, amenities that are serving, serving the residents, not just in the hamlet, but surrounding area during the summer months. So is the plan to undertake some of this activity after, you know, later on in the summer or into fall? Or what's the specific timing?
And I do have Mr. Dave Cross and Mr. Rob McGowan on the line. I believe Mr. Cross can speak to the timing of the majority of these items. So I'll, I'll let him speak to that.
Thank you, Ms. Swain. Mr. Mayor, to you, to all of council. If council approves these today, we'll be sitting down with staff to look at what the appropriate timing and scheduling of these projects would be to make sure that, you know, we can get them done as quickly as possible and in a manner that impacts the usage of the amenities because it is their peak usage time. Make sure that we impact that as little as possible. Very much. I'll just look to council, see if there's any final questions or comments. Seeing none, please raise your hand if you're in support of the motion. And that is carried unanimously. Thank you. Ms. Swain, we'll move to Section G, Operation Service Matters, and we'll go to item G2, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, my computer froze for a second. We have Mr. Jody Hancock here, who will be prepared to present the Capital Region Parkland Water Services Commission Funding Request and answer any questions that council may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Swain. I'll just always confirm my volume's working fine. Okay. The matter for G2 is the Capital Region Parkland Water Services Commission Funding Request. I'll come back to the motion, but Parkland County Administration does support the motion. And the purpose of the report is to provide funding to the Capital Region Parkland Water Services Commission, I'll refer to it as the commission, to complete the waterline connection between the com, the commission's booster station and the water lines feeding the Atchison Zone 4 reservoir. The background history on this is around 2018, the commission developed a proposal to sell the existing booster station in Edmonton. It was around the CFRN building at about 186th Street. This provided water pressure into the regional waterline feeding Atchison, Spruce Grove and Stony Plain. The proposal was coordinated with Epcor Water and was appropriate to manage Edmonton's system and their growth as well as and was appropriate to manage Edmonton system and their growth, as well as the long-term growth and development in the tri-region that we were experiencing. This long-term strategy is supported by all municipalities. The construction of the new booster station was to be completed in conjunction with the twinning. It's actually a tripling, so that's why it's in italics. It's a third line that's extending between Edmonton and eventually to Stony Plain. And this is, uh, being done to ensure long-term water supply, uh, for the tri-region is being met. The commission selected a new booster station location in Atchison Zone Four, west of two hundred and fifty-five street. Uh, it would be appropriate to point to the maps just to get, uh, a point of reference for council. Uh, there are images that do show where two fifty-five street is and where the, uh, booster station is. So, feel free to reference back to those as I, uh, talk about locations. So, the commission selected this location west of two fifty-five street, and the site was chosen as the land was convenient to acquire and offered at a reasonable price point. It is on a quarter section of land that is currently owned by the province. Other locations were reviewed and not pursued either due to price or due to complexity in acquisition. All the lands east of two fifty-five street in Parkland County or in Atchison are privately held. A challenge of selecting this location is that the booster station would be placed upstream of the water lines feeding into Zone Four Reservoir. The best image to show that is probably the third image. Uh, it's an air photo with blue lines, and the blue lines represent the existing waterline connections. So, the booster station is west of where the water lines feed into Zone Four. To ensure water can flow into the reservoir with appropriate pressures, water lines need to be constructed back from the booster station to the water lines that connect to the reservoir. Parkland County Administration was involved in several meetings with the commission once this was identified, and eventually was, this item was presented to the board for a decision. These meetings occurred in two thousand and eighteen and early two thousand and nineteen. Uh, Parkland County's administration was suggesting that the decision moved booster station upstream from the water from the water lines feeding the Zone Four Reservoir was made by the commission, and as such, they should be responsible for the costs. And this is incurred to maintain existing service. This isn't an improvement in service. The new site was easier to to obtain, and the costs for land were low, but the commission did not identify and consider the cost of maintaining service levels to the Zone Four Reservoir. The board debated this and provided a position on May eighth, two thousand and nineteen in the attached letter. I believe that's enclosed to the report as well. The commission has made a commitment to fund up to one hundred thousand dollars towards the connection. All other costs will be Parkland County's responsibility. Parkland County has done an extensive review of the commission's bylaws and their operating procedures and did not identify any means for appeal or arbitration. Uh, the board's decision is the one that we are, uh, left to follow as we best understand. In two thousand and nineteen, the project cost was five hundred and seventy-one thousand. Uh, the project has, uh, been designed to the completeness and and is tender ready. The current pre-tender cost estimate is seven hundred and forty-two thousand, six hundred dollars, a- and that's not for the twinning project. That is only for the connections from the booster station to the lines at two fifty-five street. This cost includes a fifteen percent contingency that would account for potential material cost inflation beyond those already reflected in the cost estimate. These costs have been reviewed by engineering services with Parkland County and have been accepted as accurately reflecting the current market conditions. Phase one of the twinning, uh, between Edmonton and Atchison was completed in two thousand and twenty. Uh, that would be from the old booster station to the Atchison Zone Three Reservoir, which is west of Highway sixty. They are currently working on phase two, which is from the Zone Three Reservoir into Spruce Grove's main reservoir, and this construction is expected to begin in summer of two thousand and twenty-one. The connections between the booster station and the feed lines to the Atchison Zone Four Reservoir are anticipated to be tendered together. Uh, the decision here is to try to maximize efficiencies of a larger project. Uh, lumping them two together, uh, would help with, uh, engineering costs, administrative costs, and hopefully, we gain, uh, cost efficiencies through the larger project. As I'd mentioned, images of the booster station location and connecting lines have been included in the attached documents. I'd I'd be happy to walk through those if anything's needed, if it's not clear. Um, the commission does require a formal commitment by the county for the improvements prior to approving their twenty twenty-one construction agreements or the construction tenders. Subject to council's approval, administration will provide that, uh, approval to proceed, uh, with the commission. Motion in front of council, uh, today is that, uh, council approved six hundred and forty-two thousand, six hundred for the waterline connection from the Capital Region Parkland Water Services Commission Booster Station to the Atchison Zone Four Reservoir to be funded by municipal sustainability initiative, MSI capital grant. And with that, I'll turn back to the mayor for, or council for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hancock. Uh, can I get a member of council put that motion forward, please?
Mister Mayor, councillor Kabasiuk, Division Three, I'll put that motion forward, and if I might, I just want to make a comment. I appreciate that administration, uh, looked through the bylaws and, uh, looked at process in terms of, uh, majority vote. There's, uh, the structure with, uh, the commission, and there's a process to follow. I know that our members at the time, uh, uh, felt that there could be another means to addressing this matter, and then it doesn't ne- that it didn't necessarily fall all to Parkland County. But a vote is a vote, and, um, if that was what the majority dictated and wished, um, I I believe from the information you've provided us, it's reasonable that we would support this so they could move forward. So, I'll put that motion forward.
You, councillor Kabasiuk, uh, other comments from members of council? Councillor Melnick.
Thank you. Well, I find it frustrating that, um, this area was served previously. And now we need this. Is there any other, um, option that we can, like, if we said no, if council said no, what 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 is going to happen? Thanks.
Uh, through, uh, the mayor to councillor, uh, Melnick, uh, the option is there to say no. The the impact is that Parkland County, uh, Parkland County's main reservoir with the completion of the Zone Four Reservoir in two thousand and twenty is that this is the main location for water storage for serving the Atchison Business Area. Um, we would be limited in our future economic opportunities. Uh, if we have aspirations of expanding to Atchison Zone Six or Eight, um, which has been talked about a little bit, um, that that may restrict our abilities to go further south and further expand into, uh, undeveloped areas. Um, again, depending on the timeline that it takes to complete it, so whether we complete it today or tomorrow, or the next day after that, uh, the line still does need to be completed to meet our twenty-five-year development plan for the Atchison Business Area. So, again, the 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 line is there. Um, it needs to be in place to have full buildout of Atchison. Um, we could choose to say no today. Uh, we would not take advantage of the larger project, larger programming. Uh, uh, the tender prices would likely be higher than they are being, uh, an individual, uh, separated project. And, uh, some of the immediate impacts near term without any kind of growth and development is we would rely on Epcor Water to, uh, put the pressure in the line to fill our Zone Four Reservoir. As I mentioned, that's now our main holding capacity area for, uh, uh, Atchison area. We do have ability to uh, move water from Atchison Zone Four back and forth between Zone Three, but it is a little bit of a convoluted process. And, uh, it does start to limit our immediate impacts on how we manage water. We put a lot of pressure on our operators, our water operators, uh, in the immediate term.
Councillor McNabb.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, and, um, my comment is in regards to the the pre-existing, um, booster station that would be at the CFRN area. And, uh, so, uh, and I've I've heard comments over the years of being here, but not specifics of, um, this this, um, topic. But, um, and tr- just trying to understand it myself. So, there was a booster station that was sold and and, um, I guess my question would be, in my simple mind, would be, you know, where where is that money? And, um, did that money get re-directed to help with, uh, the replacement of this booster station? And, um, and and I just ask that in in a in a fair type, um, perspective, if, um, the if something got sold, was the plan to replace it? Were those dollars accounted for and, um, and or the agreements were accounted for, I guess, um, so? Um, was that all part of the plan? I I was looking forward to, um, other members that were kind of involved in over the years, because I'm sure this has has come up, um, in the past. And, um, I know, I know, um, it's a, it's a kind of a hot topic, so, um, my question is is in regards to if something got sold, was it the plan to help replace, um, what got sold?
Uh, through the mayor to councillor McNabb, I I don't know where the exact dollars went from the sale of the CFRN booster station. I believe they went back into the, uh, uh, the the bucket of money that the commission does rely upon to fund their utilities. Uh, again, they have the the utility fees that takes to operate, uh, for the sale of water purchasing from the Epcor system. Uh, you then, you start at the river, it goes to the Epcor system, and then it comes into the commission system. So, there is a fee for the water purchasing. There's a fee for the distribution of the water once you have it. Uh, I believe the money from the sale went to funding the capital projects. And I say pro- capital projects because I think it went into phase one, two, and three of the twinning, as well as the booster station construction. So, um, we would have to go back to the commission and ask that question unless one of the board members, uh, of the commission present knew where that went exactly.
And I think I would look forward to if the commission members or past commission members would have an idea of yes, it's basically on the plan, what the plan originally was, and may maybe it was, um, clear back in the day, but it just seems a little muddy right now.
Mister Chair, if if I might, uh, I was a member of the commission, but, uh, unfortunately, at the time of this final decision, members who were on that commission, councillor Hollins and councillor McQuaker, are not here today to answer that question. So, I I know that, um, what, um, uh, Mr. Hancock is talking about, to the sale of that was moved into the overall project, but I don't know what the final decision was because I wasn't a member when those up there.
Councillor Kabasiuk, um, you've got a very weak internet connection and you're frozen, so. I think you're back.
Yep.
Okay, um, I guess a couple of comments, questions I have. Uh, in the creation of and the work that was put into the tri-regional plan, the, uh, consultants identified potential joint ventures and cost cost-saving mechanisms for the three municipalities, and they specifically identified what one of those be in the reservoir that was built in Spruce Grove. Um, and they said Stony Plain will need to build a reservoir in the future, and had the municipalities cooperated and and had some discussion, there could have been some cost savings. I'm very disappointed with, um, the our partners in the, uh, Capital Region Parkland Water Commission, the city of Spruce Grove and town of Stony Plain, not recognizing and being sensitive that resources are finite. And what this has done is put put additional, uh, burden on Parkland County ratepayers. Did the commission, uh, Mr. Hancock, I don't know if you you're able to answer this, but on the, uh, attached attachment with the, uh, um, sho- showing the pump house and the booster station, the lands in to the east, um, recognizing that those those are probably some of the lands that were identified as, um, being at a higher price point. Uh, the report did say that the lands, uh, ultimately that were purchased and the pump house is located on is all, uh, belonged to the province, one of the provincial departments. I don't believe the government of Alberta has a policy to let lands go below market rate to municipalities or any other party. I could be wrong. Um, I guess that's the first question. Are you aware of such a policy?
Um, I I've had multiple dealings with the Alberta government in in land acquisitions, and and they have market value. Uh, or they in prod- in different projects, and I don't know specifically in this one, but different projects, I've heard them talk about market value, and I've heard them talk about book value. So, as a municipality, um, for a public utility, they will sell land at book value, meaning whatever they pay plus interest, they'll sell back. And and so it's not market value. It becomes a book value, which can be substantially less if they bought the initial purchase at a very low number. So, I don't know what happened here, but I definitely have been in deals, uh, with the Alberta government on book value versus market value.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm just wondering also if you might be, uh, know knowledgeable whether, uh, the Parkland Water Commission Administration spoke to the landowners on the other side of two fifty-fifth street. That's, um, to me, looks like it's undeveloped at this point. Uh, when they go to develop, there is a requirement or an obligation. Municipalities can take, um, uh, properties for municipal reserve for public utility lots, um, as part of that contribution. Was there any conversation that, hey, the commission is looking to for some cost savings in the future when you go to develop these lands? Um, would you like to make available those those lands now, uh, that can go and be utilized as a public utility? Are you aware of whether that conversation took place?
Uh, to the mayor and rest of council, uh, I am aware that those conversations did occur. Uh, we challenged the commission on many fronts. That was one of the fronts that we challenged them on. Um, they provided us, uh, documentation through their land, uh, agent that they used to acquire the provincial piece that they also pursued lands east of. I don't know if they pursued it as aggressively as we maybe would have liked and wished, but they did have some, uh, documentation saying that they pursued that. Uh, further, uh, we also, uh, took it on our hands to pursue the landowners to the east. Uh, there's two quarter sections, and there's two landowners. Um, we felt that there was a opportunity to acquire those lands, um, if the right, uh, uh, deal may have been placed in front of those landowners. Had they subdivided or developed at any point in time, we definitely would have taken it through subdivision processes, and that would have been at no cost.
Thank you for those comments. And the final question I have on potential options for relocation and and cost avoidance on this. Again, just referring back to, uh, the attached, uh, diagram, I believe that is attachment two with this item. Is there, um, and I my apologies, I didn't take a look, uh, on our system to identify who the landowner is just south of the the reservoir? Or is there opportunity, was there opportunity to locate that booster station on the same property where the reservoir was? I'm assuming that would have been the first option, but I just want to confirm.
Uh, we did look at different options for alignment, so we looked at whether we could be, um, on the eastern edge of the provincial right-of-way or provincial lands, rather, and bring the lines up so there wasn't, uh, as long as an extension. Uh, moving the booster station off the main line would have been uh, a double the cost, because you'd have to go up and come back down again. So, it didn't make sense from an operation side to move the booster station off of the alignment. They were pretty much stuck on on the location of the existing east-west alignment. Um, but again, when we looked at connections to Zone Four Reservoir, even while we were designing and building the reservoir, we must have looked at ten or fifteen different options to, uh, bring most costs as low as we could.
Thank you for that. Yeah, like, again, just, I'm disappointed, frustrated, um, that we didn't have partners who who are more receptive to looking at all the options and also recognizing that this is a commission initiative. Um, Mr. Hancock, are you aware of what the, um, the funding formula is for the three member municipalities for co- capital projects? Is it based on, um, current allocations, future allocations? What is the formula that's used to determine the contributions from the three respective, uh, parties?
I am, I I don't want to, I don't want to misstep on this, so that's an answer I'd have to come back with. Uh, I I think I know, but I don't want to say it. Um, there is, uh, an element of industrial versus residential that does come into play. And and that is at the upper limit of what the grant permits, uh, for the funding, so that's that's the grant funding piece. But the share within the municipalities, uh, I I'd have to come back to have a positive answer on that or a confirmed answer.
Okay, thank you. And I guess it just lends itself, um, I guess, for conversation with our municipal partners is, um, do we want to take a look at at a policy or alignment where, um, if a municipality is looking at servicing or or providing any sort of infrastructure asset, um, for the others to base their contributions upon, uh, the the maximum return? So, for example, if a recreation facility is being built, um, and the host municipality where it is uh, wants it in a certain area, and there's greater opportunity to leverage it, say, along Uh wants it in a certain area and there's greater opportunity to leverage it, say along a provincial highway. Um where additional non-residential development takes place, maybe contributions from the other two or less. Um who's, so I think that's just an opportunity to have conversation, um because that's what appears this one is based on. Um nonetheless, uh any final comments on this, this item? Councillor Melnick.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I guess you know, when I look at this, I, I'm kind of going, well, that's um, that's about a one percent. Or just over a one percent tax increase to Parkland County residents. And. So we again have to find the money somewhere to, to fund this um and keeping things, and I know it says MSI, but still, we would have used MSI money somewhere else. Um so I guess maybe in some of the other partnerships that we have, whether it be rec facilities. Um we just may not be able to contribute to the degree that we need to, or they would like us to, I mean, thanks.
And that was kind of my point, Councillor Melnick, is um these are costs that we incurred because of decisions from our regional partners. So maybe when we get a funding request. Um from one or both, it's, you know what, we'll fund you less six hundred and forty-two thousand, six hundred dollars. With that, if there's no additional comments, um I'll ask members of council, if you're in favor of this motion. Um please raise your hand and councillor Kabastic, I will need you to put your video on, please.
Video showing to me.
Well, I, I have a blank screen. Um okay, I'll ask assistants um. Have raised your hand if you're in favor and I will need somebody to confirm if councillor Kabastic is in favor because I don't see her image.
Oh, she's froze, I guess, obviously on our end because she's not moving.
Okay. Well, we do have three members voting in favor, which it'll carry. But I will wait a moment for councillor Kabasic. Maybe what we'll do is take a quick recess, councillor Kabak- Kabasic can exit and then. Okay, that is carried. Um we'll have to monitor to ensure that you're able to hear and participate on. Uh the next item, which is G three, Miss Wayne.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Uh Mister Hancock is also prepared to present the Walker Lake Water Loop Funding Request. And answer any questions that council may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Wayne. Um this purpose of this project is that the project funding approved in the twenty twenty-one budget. For the Walker Lake Water Loop uh is insufficient to complete the project. Uh administration completed the design of this project in twenty twenty with planned construction in twenty twenty-one. The project was tendered through Alberta Purchasing Connection, APC, which is our standard process. Uh it was done in an open competitive market. Uh we did receive significant interest in the project. The three lowest bids were within fifteen percent of each other. And the bids came in from common contractors, uh knowledgeable of the area, very experienced and had strong capabilities. After completing the tendering process, the lowest bid was seven hundred thousand dollars over the existing budget. Additional funds are required to award the work in twenty twenty-one. Since the start of twenty twenty-one, uh there have been continued inflationary costs applied to the water and wastewater system components. Um we, uh this is assumed to be attributed to material availability. And inconsistent contractor availability through the ongoing pandemic. And although we're. You know, seemingly out of the pandemic and, and lockdown scenarios, we do have supplying chain. Supply chain disruptions and supply chain management for these types of materials. Uh we don't expect this to end in the near term and at best, uh we expect it to normalize at or above the current rates. Uh being applied to contracts for the rest of the twenty twenty-one and into twenty twenty-two. So even if we do defer the project, we don't expect the price point to change considerably. As this is an off-site levy recovery project, debt borrowing was applied as the original funding source with the expectation of full cost recovery over time. Administration recommends that additional funding, should it be approved by council, be provided from the water and the wastewater restricted surplus account. This funding is readily available and does not require the advertising and the bylaw update that a borrowing bylaw would require. It would take us uh two to three months uh with the advertising and the appeal periods to get that bylaw in place. Which we would lose the twenty twenty-one construction year. Funding uh under this uh 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 location will still be fully cost recoverable through the levy system. Alternatively, council may choose to defeat the motion. This means that the county will not complete the work in twenty twenty-one. Uh administration will submit for additional funding in the twenty twenty-two budget and will look to complete this next year. It is possible that prices may come down, but the market indications are that we see the continued inflation coming out of the pandemic recession. Um I think you had the advantage of the CIBC uh report this morning that uh hopefully is echoing what I'm saying as well that we. We do see the inflation, uh this would be identified and I took a term off of them as a, as a COVID-sensitive item. Uh the material costs for these water lines uh do seem to be hitting that uh inflationary market. Uh as this is a water looping project, there's no advantage to completing the project in two phases, it's kind of all or none, or we don't gain the benefit of the looping. And administration is recommending for going forward for two additional reasons. Um first, it, it's a critical infrastructure loop. That connects, uh I guess, residential development from the lake shore and Walker Lake subdivisions, basically east and west of Highway sixty. It connects those two communities. There is a risk that water service interruptions will occur with water main breaks. Homes will be without water for extended periods of time while they do the repairs. And there are single connections to those areas. So again, if we don't have the loop uh and there's a break, then those areas are without water until we. Complete the uh repair. The second reason for us advancing this is it's been a priority project since two thousand and fifteen, the county, the, the administration completed. The county's Big Lake Atchison Water Servicing Plan, uh this is a critical link identified in that plan and we've been pushing it off for a number of years. Uh in lieu of other projects. It is important to continue to insert these missing pieces so that the county can continue to support on growing growth. Whether it's red, in this case, whether it's residential or industrial, and we want to be able to say yes to develop an opportunity to just come forward. The motion is that council approved seven hundred thousand dollars of additional funding from the water and wastewater restricted surplus for the Walker Lake. Waterline Looping Project. Administration supports the proposed motion. And I'll turn it back to uh mayor and council for any questions.
Thank you, Mister Hancock. Once again, uh can I get a move in for the motion, please?
Um Mister Mayor, I think it's my turn for that one, is that council approved a seven, so John McMahon, Parkland County Division Five. That council approved seven hundred thousand of additional funding from the water and wastewater restricted surplus for the water lake. Walker Lake Water Loop Project.
Thank you, and I'll open it up for comments or questions.
Hey, I got one question for Mister Hancock, if I may, in regards to that um payback of that um seven hundred thousand dollars in regards to restricted surplus. What would be a timeframe if that would come back for a payback? Those dollars would come back in there, um is that a twenty-year payback, a two-year payback? What, what would be the, the concept there?
Uh to councillor McNab, we didn't go to that level to determine the exact payback time period. Um what we do understand, uh and again, Mister Blake, if he's still on the line, can help me with this, but we do have funds that are unallocated in the levy. Accounts, uh I believe there's a, an effort to pay back the development community. Uh as, as a first stage and the county projects as a second stage, and, and there are a number of water projects. A number of funds in the water project specifically that could come directly back to this initiative in the near term. And there's uh other monies for other projects, roadway, wastewater, storm projects. That could also be used to supplement that if we wanted to recoup some of those funds earlier. But we did not go to the extent of modeling out the anticipated return, i- it would be based on development activity. More development there is, the faster the payback.
Any other comments or questions?
I believe Mister Dyke was going to comment.
Uh thank you, Mister Mayor, to you and through you. If I can just supplement Mister Hancock's. Uh comments, we are working through the, the process of looking at our deferred revenue levels associated with offsite levies. And proposing a uh payback, uh obviously the county itself is a. Uh eligible entity for payback as well as other developers within the county, so that process is well underway. Uh we're at the point now where we're looking for confirmations on the numbers to make sure that. Uh there's agreement between us and the development community on uh what is owed to whom. So as soon as that uh process is complete, we would have available funds to pay this back. Uh timeframe is relatively short, certainly this year. I would just like to uh clarify that. That those are funds that have been earned associated with past projects, they're not earned associated with future development. Uh with this project, so we're taking money that could be used for any purpose, uh saying, you know, it was for a water project, this is a water project, they'd link well together. Uh so it could be a prudent decision to make to allocate it there, and we would of course come back to council for uh a recommended.
Thank you, Mister Dyke, for those comments. Any additional comments or questions from members of council? And again, I'm just seeing a black screen for councillor Kabasic, so I'm not sure if uh she does have any comments or questions.
Mister Chair, I don't have any comments or questions, uh can you, I think you can hear me, my microphone is off, uh but I've taken myself off of video.
Thank you, councillor Kabasic. So. No, no further comments. I guess the comment I'll make is uh Mister Hancock, you, you referred to this as a COVID-sensitive uh. Situation here with the supply chain. I've had conversations with friends that are seeing a lot of price increases and they're calling it COVID corporate greed instead of. Uh COVID uh s- sensitive uh increases in prices, whatever it is, um the costs are cer- certainly rising, so. Um with that, uh I'll ask the question and councillor Kabasic, if you can provide verbally, um whether you support the motion. I'll ask the other members of council, please raise your hand. Sorry, councillor Kabasic, are you in favor?
I am in favor, Mister Chair.
Thank you very much, that's carried. Uh yes, thank you, that's carried unanimously. With that, um we do have an item for a closed session, I'll turn that over to introduction to Miss Wayne.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. The proposed motion before you is that council convene in closed session. Pursuant to section one ninety-seven of the Municipal Government Act. To meet in private to discuss matters protected from disclosure by section twenty-three of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act.
Thank you, and can I get a member of council put forward that motion, please?
Mister Mayor, it's councillor Tracy Melnick, Division Six, I'll put forward the motion to enter into a session.
Thank you, and uh please indicate if you're in support of that motion, raise your hand. And councillor Kabasic, if you can. So we will.
In favor.
Thank you, councillor Kabasic, so we will be going into closed session. Thank you, Councilor Kabasik. So we will be going into closed session. Thank you.